Yeah, it's good.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting on this Monday, November the 14th, 2022 at approximately 7:06 PM. Ms. Derry, would you call the road, please?
Certainly. A.C. Brown?
Here.
Ralph Necker?
Here.
Bob Powell is absent. Daniel Fainell?
Here.
Tim Seri is absent, and Lance Seri is absent. But we do have a forum.
Thank you very much. If everyone would please stand, this evening we'll begin our meeting with a prayer. I'm going to ask Councilman McDaniel to pray for us, and then followed by a pledge of allegiance by Chief, uh, Stuart Bryan. Is he here? Wayne? Chief, would you mind to the place? Thank you.
Father, we thank you for this day of life that you've blessed us with. We thank you, Father, for this great community that we live. We pray, Father, that this community and this nation will put the sting and the bitterness of politics behind us, that we would work together as a team to do what is best for this community. Help us, Father, as we do the business of the city, that we do it for the good of all. Help us, Father, to live our lives as we should. Christ's name, we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May you see? At this time, I would ask the council's approval or the consider approval for the minutes for the October 3rd, 22 regular council meeting.
Next, that's be approved.
Okay. Have a motion, second.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Necker?
Yes.
Mary Lynn Bog?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, recognition and knowledge for tonight. Appreciate everybody coming out on this almost snowy, almost bad evening. So hopefully we can, uh, not, we can get through a meeting pretty quick and get everybody safely back home. Uh, I do want to acknowledge the cross-country girls, I believe, won state this last week, I believe, or not too long in the past. And Noah Embry also won the state individual cross-country. So, uh, as Greenwood continues to grow these athletes. Somebody asks me all the time, when I go to the musical league, how does that happen? I'm like, we may not grow them big, but we grow them talented. So we've got some great athletes in the city. Uh, we'll get on to the committee reports. So that's how special county boys and girls love. Uh, we all have, uh, I believe, written or in your tablet, reports. Kenny's not here this evening. Um, number two is, our, SRCA, you should have reported there, too. Parks Commission, Mr. Cole seems here, did you want to speak?
Yeah.
You got a report in. Uh, Water Waste Water Commission, Mr. Cole's here with a report also turned in. So if you have any questions for these folks, these two gentlemen that are here, you certainly do that tonight, or, uh, if you have some questions for the other reports, uh, as always, get with myself or Danielle, and we'll get you some answers more specifically.
Mayor, what about the Park?
Uh, yes, absolutely.
So, uh, some of you may know this, uh, Thursday, right, there was a special call being in the Parks Commission. Um, when RDOT was here, uh, to do their ribbon cutting, uh, for the highway overlay, uh, they announced that at that time that we'd been given a grant, uh, $200,000 grant for, uh, parks and trail, uh, trails and bridges, RTP grant, it's the RDOT, RTP grant is what it was. Um, and so as you know, we've been working on this bridge project, uh, what we're calling the Cuthbert Bridge. Um, you've got the old bridge, the existing bridge out there. Um, and we talked to RDOT, um, I talked to a lady, couldn't say what her name was, perhaps, um, and they said they didn't care which bridge we used it for, it's part of our trails and, uh, that kind of deal. So we had a meeting Thursday afternoon, and the Parks Commission agreed to, uh, move that money to this Cuthbert Bridge project. And so that fully funds that project. Um, and so this week, that would have been last week, right, or this Monday, right? Um, so that would have been last week. I told the Colby Holmes, uh, and those guys that are fabricators to go ahead with what they're doing. Cause I think the last time we talked about that, we had kind of put that at a two-phase project, um, just making sure we had funding, right? And so I went ahead and told those guys to go ahead with their fabrication and get the ball rolling. Um, uh, Jacob Burton is out there now, working on the concrete, the buttons and, um, all that stuff. So he's going to be a little while, but you know, hopefully by spring, we'll have a bridge out there. Does that make for that?
Yeah. So and I want to publicly say, too, thank you for Tammy Browley. Tammy, uh, tried three times on that grant and third time's a charm. So with the help of Tracy McKinnon, uh, at West Orange, saw plenty of development. We were like, like, uh, Mr. Councilman McDaniel said, we were awarded that grant. And so she worked on that pretty hard and finally got it to come to fruition. And as soon as Casey became Parks Director, we stole his grant, put it on the grid. He's cool with that. So, uh, the good news is we'll have a new bridge. It's going to be, and yep, but after I encourage you to go out, uh, and take a look at what's going on, it's really going to be pretty, pretty magnificent, in my opinion. It's going to be, it's that 1931 bridge, uh, that we obtained almost 14 or 15 years ago from Hope, Arkansas, that's going to be across there. So hopefully that, the idea is that it's going to look like it's been there since 1931. So it'll be pretty cool.
Excuse me, can I still get down to the agenda and speak?
Uh, yes, ma'am, you may. I will put you down.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm like, there was a green jeep where my green jeep should be.
That's not right. Got you. Okay. Uh, so moving on to system forms is where we are. So I've got, I've got one scratched at the top. Is that right? Okay. And I've got number two is Jim Nukem. If you will come up and tell us who you are and talk to us. Name and address, sir.
Yeah, 149th Street.
Is this what you wanted to address, Councilman?
Yeah.
It's all about Mr. McDaniel.
Yeah. Uh, Council, Mr. Derry here. Uh, this is a follow-up to my, I guess, exertive of conflict of interest. Uh, when I questioned it, I think it was last meeting, uh, Mr. Handy said it had the, you know, the meeting had a problem with, uh, talking about financial issues. And we'll give you a glass to, you know, guess. Anyways, I questioned the list of committees and from Stewart, and he gave, you got to get your hands up, the chairman of committee, committee of discussions. Um, he gave me a, called the personnel board, and, uh, on it was several people, Stewart, Brian, A.C. Brown, Bob Powell, Lance Seri, Martin, uh, Doug, Mike, Councilman Randy Carter, Taylor Necker, Justin King. Um, on that board, I asked him, after I got that, I wanted to know what the responsibilities of that board were. And he told me they really didn't have any. His actual work with committees are not standing committees and do not have a list of responsibilities. And, uh, the committee I have, he says, is a standing committee. And I told him, I said, I want to see what the personnel board mentioned has been the same since 2007. And in his note, he told me don't continue this board, this personnel board, nothing, in other words, it's been like this since 2007. Then I went further there and I asked him, I said, well, can you tell me what the responsibilities of the personnel board are? And he told me the committees are not standing committees and do not have a list of responsibilities. I thought that was a real fun. So I went to the city website, down in Ballinger Fire Department, 2.3202, it's called definitions. And the definition of the fire board is the fire board shall assist the fire chief, assistant chief, captains, captains, and safety and training officers. The fire personnel board shall make recommendations to the fire chief, who shall make recommendations made known to the mayor and city council in regard to need for the additional personnel, and should otherwise assist in preparation and management for the department's annual budget. The fire personnel board shall also confirm only officer service with many, tight of time to be nominated by the fire chief. The fire personnel board may also make a reply to recommendations to the married individuals who are being considered for appointment for the fire chief. Well, uh, I got my answer, Council, in regards to the needs, uh, is it, did the needs for additional personnel should otherwise assist in preparation? Doesn't it otherwise assist in preparation and management for the department's annual budget? That's where my point of the conflict of interest is. If you've got a board, personnel board, preparing your budget, and you've got three councilmen on it, and then those councilmen take off their fire cap, and they come here and put the council hats on, and they vote on it, and they pass it, then they go back to the fire department. And then according to their own definition, they're charging management and disbursement of that month for the fire department. That's a conflict of interest. I mean, it pretty on, uh, obvious to me that it's a conflict, and we've talked about the conflict before. And, you know, Mike, you told me, you know, if they discuss city, uh, city business, financial business, it was a conflict. Okay?
If anything, they discuss and say, oh, I'm going to vote this way and that way, uh, discuss either going to vote, then yeah, I think that you run a buck. The issue that you have, and I've been wrestling with this for, I don't know how long, uh, longer than I care to wrestle with it, but you have a state statute out there that says that it's legal, perfectly legal, to have firemen also sit on the council. And when you have firemen also sitting on the council, I refuse that, that, that looks like that would be a conflict of interest. And I don't know how you separate those issues as well, because, uh, as a fire department, you're going to be discussing those things. Uh, you're going to be discussing the same things you would on a council. Uh, I think the issue has been brought to, uh, several senators, representatives' attention to try to get that law changed or modified or clarified, but to date, nothing has transpired. And so the law is still on the books. And so I certainly don't want to be impervious to saying that I think any of the fire that are on this council is doing anything inappropriate. Um, I agree with what Mr. Newton was saying, that it gives off the appearance that way, but there's a state law that says you can do it. So if there's a state law out there that says you can do it, so let's take laws stretching down as unconstitutional or amended out of its legislature, then it is what it is.
Yes, sir. I agree with you on that. I read that law. But what that does, it leads me to my second point. I brought up, you know, requesting minutes in the August meeting. They had a fire meeting the day after. So they've had four meetings since I requested that. Bob Powell said, that's a really good idea. We ought to do that. I had to do a lot of digging, it goes my whole way back to 2011. And there's also a law on the books that if there's three councilmen present, they have minutes. Am I right?
I could, I could rely on that, and I don't know what's on top of my head. I'd do research and find out, too, but I don't know, I'm sure that a lot of time.
Well, if they had minutes, it would be a lot easier.
Right.
And if you want to avoid the perception of something going on when it's not, then provide minutes, start by minutes. I'm, you know, A.C., you're going to fire me here. And I said, I'm going to ask you, get with them, you're either lieutenant or captain. I don't remember what your position is, what is it?
Uh, captain.
Guess what I thought? Okay. Well, captain, get with them and get the minutes started, please. Please get the minutes started. Cause it's a lot easier than going and starting to dig through records.
I, I agree with Rod, and it is a good idea. And I'm discussing that with the chief.
All right. I hope that you do it. All right. Thank you.
And I did, whenever you made the request, Stuart was on the phone with me for, uh, probably about two hours.
Yeah.
Uh, in between what I was doing, and I bet he was traveling back from schooling, and I was in and out of court. And so I did talk to Stuart and Link and tried to assist him, put him together.
He did a good job responding. He did.
Part of his responsible reports that I told him to put down.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Dinkelman. Uh, next on the list is Ms. Donna Naglor. If you will come up and give us your name and address, please.
I'm Donna Naglor. I live at 336th Street in Arkansas. I'm here to remind you about the officer's pay. I know that we're not voting on that tonight. Thank you to Daniel, who reached out to me to say that that's a budgetary thing, and you all have to look at the budgets in order to do that. And I totally understand about budgets, of course. I own my own business. I own five businesses. I'm a business that survived 2008 and survived the pandemic. So I know all about how to budget. I budget every single day. I don't just budget once a year or once a week. I budget literally every single day. So I know about budgets. Um, I do know that there was a little snarky response about the chief begging for a raise. Uh, the chief is not begging for a raise. Um, the raises were actually brought to attention at a city council meeting by one of our city councilmen, who had said, oh, let's do it, let's raise them on up. So I decided I'm going to take the ball and run with it. So, uh, I guess if anybody is here begging, I guess it's me. I don't think anybody needs to come to a city council meeting and beg, first of all, that, um, I guess if I'm here begging, then that's what I'm wanting to do. Um, but yes, uh, I do believe our chief probably does need to be in that list of getting a raise. He's a great leader. It takes a great leader. As we know, we have a great leader in our city right now. And, and, uh, we have a great leader in my business, and that's how we survive. You have a great leader. And so I would like to ask you all to look at that, and you look at the numbers, too, and see if he could have a raise, because I believe that's important. Um, we are the second safest city in Arkansas, and that's not by mistake, because we have a great team. We have a great leader, and we have a great team. And, um, we don't even know the half of what happens. I've seen little snarky, uh, things to me. You know, people think that I was dubbed as a campaign manager. They think that I'm on the blood committee. They think that I'm a, I don't work for the city. I don't work for, I don't work for the police department, but that's okay, whatever. Um, we have no idea what touches us. And, uh, I have encouraged people, sit down with an officer. If you sit down with an officer for just 10 minutes, you're going to be surprised what actually happens in Greenwood, that you have no clue, because I have done that. Um, I was absolutely bombarded and surprised at the stuff that actually happens. It never comes near us and never touches us because they handle it. They handle it and they move on to the next thing. Never comes near us and never touches us because they just handle it. Uh, and, um, I know a lot of the officers have had side businesses because, let's be frank, they need an extra, extra money to raise their families. And a young man that would mow my yard is how I found out information. And, um, one of the days I'm driving home, I'm 71 from Fort Smith, and a vehicle is driving at me. I whipped to the side of the road. I'm like, okay, he's on duty. It's easier for me to call him than to call nine one one. And I'm like, hey, I heard about an incident where a house was broken into, a car was stolen. This is the car of the law. He's like, no, 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 we are here with all that. He's like, you'd be surprised at how many people drive the wrong way in 71. I'm like, wait, what? And he's like, you'd be surprised. The drunk people, the high people that drive the wrong way in 71. We don't know that because they just handle it. Um, I've also seen the, uh, um, snarky little thing that said Greenwood is just a stepping stone. Officers just need to get over it. Uh, just work it at Greenwood and move on to Fort Smith or whatever. I don't want Greenwood to be a stepping stone for any of our officers. We have great officers, and I want to keep them. And if it's just a few bucks here or there, what's the problem? I was at a meeting where I heard we had $17 million in the bank, and we are a positive cash flow. So what's the problem? Because as a business owner, when my operations manager comes to me and says, hey, I need this, and I have this person that, I look at my budget, it's a no-brainer. So I have a, a rent house that I have an officer that's living in right now. He couldn't afford rent anywhere else at the time. So John and I got together and we looked at all our numbers. Yes, it is my business and John's business, but I also have, uh, an accountant that, an accountant I have to respond to, and a banker I have to respond to. So John and I looked at all the numbers and said, you know what? We can afford this. We can afford to cut this. We can afford to make this so that this rent is this amount and not what I really could be getting. So I am asking you all, as a city, we can afford this. So I am asking you to do the same as John and I did, as a city. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to, uh, the next item on the agenda is agenda additions. We do not have any tonight unless council has anything on their mind that we need to add. And if not, we'll move on to, uh, number one, under old unfinished business, planning department, Mr. Bell. So ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance, 05-14 land subdivision regulation code, second reading.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. Derry. Uh, this is second reading for the, uh, meeting of the subdivision regulations that we talked about, uh, last, uh, month. Uh, this is where we have gone through. We updated all of our street specifications on construction and bring them in line with, uh, uh, the fire code and other, other, uh, things that Chad at the time of our street director wanted to make sure that it's put in there so that we're building the best roads that we can, in agreement with. Since, uh, last month, there has been one other small change, and that is, uh, on page 41, I believe, uh, where it talks about easements. We found a discrepancy in ordinance 1602, which is the water standard ordinance that was passed that, uh, it says the water wastewater reason shall be amended 20 feet in width. And the event 20 feet, uh, cannot be provided. City staff will reduce for consideration. In our subdivision regulations, it, it had 10 foot. So I'd increase that to 20 foot to match the water standards. Uh, but, uh, that's the only change that we have. I would ask you to suspend the rules tonight and waive the third reading so that we can go ahead and get this, uh, going because we've got some other projects coming in. And I'd like to make sure that there was no, uh, confusion on the easements and also any road construction.
Do we need to approve the, uh, the subdivision development code since you modified that from 10 to 20 feet, along with, uh, accepting those ordinance?
Well, that would be, uh, part of the, the subdivision regulations. That's, that's another change in there. There's some minor changes in there that we went over, like, uh, the cul-de-sac circumference and things like that, that, uh, when we changed the, uh, the road construction, we made sure that it matched, uh, the subdivision regulations. See, this is a, this is the, the denim to the subdivision regulations that goes over the street, uh, construction. So we made sure everything were matched, uh, even the, uh, definitions. Uh, there were some definitions that we put in there, make sure that they, um, mentioned the cul-de-sac easements and things like that. But it's a total package that we're, we're redoing the, uh, amending the subdivision regulations. But as we have in the recent past, uh, Ms. Derry and I, anytime that we do a, uh, uh, an ordinance like this, instead of amending it and making a long trail that we have to follow, we do away with one and bring, and call this a new, new ordinance.
Well, I see. You know, where it says the section two, that, uh, that's the one you're referring to, that, uh, that's going to be, uh, it says attached and, uh, adopted by the city council. Is that what you're talking about there? Is that, uh, those regulations development code?
I'm not familiar, uh, A.C., with, with, uh, where, where you're talking about on that, uh...
The change is circled and attached to the ordinance. So I think that's what you were saying.
Well, I guess I'm kind of confused because the, under the title, it says in ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance number 5-14 Greenwood, uh, land subdivision regulations development code, and repealing all ordinances in conflict we're with. It sounds like to me is we're repealing the Greenwood land subdivision regulations development code as well.
We are, but, but we're, we're bringing that in as a new ordinance.
The ordinance is on your tablet. It's long, 48 pages long.
Yeah.
I've been sent it. It was in the packet.
I didn't, it wasn't my packet.
It's on your tablet.
It's on the tablet? Okay. That could be, yeah, emailed to, I don't know if the councilman got that or not. I didn't get it, uh, it's attached.
But this change attached is the only change in that whole 48.
I was going to say that is the only change.
Yes, and why three, that's what you want.
But it sounds like we're repealing and we're adopting. Is it the same, huh?
Replacing.
Repealing.
Current, the current ordinance, 514, adopts these regulations. So we made a few changes to the regulations. And so then you're going to repeal the current ordinance and replace it.
Okay.
Re-adopting the ord, the re-adopting the regulation.
We're gonna amend again. We're repealing it and replacing.
No different than we've done over and over.
All right. I think that, to me, it should really say that we're repealing 514 and replacing Greenwood land subdivision, because to me, it was like we're repealing and replacing both the ordinance and the subdivision code. It's just kind of confusing there, maybe by the title.
That's how we worded, and that's how we worded all of them.
What's the title of 514, I guess would be the question, right?
It's the Greenwood land subdivision regulations and development.
514 is a ordinance adopting the Greenwood land subdivision, right?
Yes.
If this ordinance is repealing and replacing that, replacing it with this order. It's just how it's ordered. If you want an ordinance repealing 0514 or replacing.
Okay. So they are one of the same then? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, five fourteen is the ordinance that adopts the land subdivision.
And you see the explanations in section one and section two of this ordinance.
Right.
The attachment says what wasn't provided in paper because it's so much paper. It's on the tablet, so. That's all the code. And the shaded parts are what is being replaced. It's on your tablet last time. I thought it was with the package or no?
I'll make a motion, we put this on second reading by title only with any changes that Sonny Bell did.
Second. Motion is second.
You've cited it on second reading.
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Gayle?
Yes.
And? An ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance number zero five dash fourteen Greenwood land subdivision regulations and development. How they're repealing all ordinances in conflict with.
I'll make a motion, we suspend the rules and waive the third reading.
Second. Motion is second.
Brown?
And what do we need to?
Well, we've got some projects coming in that I'd like to make sure that those easements and other changes as far as the road construction are in subdivision regulations so they're not in confusion where we've got, I really need Chad here to explain some of the road construction because he's talking about compaction and things like this that I really don't know anything about, but that's what him, what he came up with and then we coordinated it with Stuart to make sure that it worked with fire codes and all that. So it would just make it a cleaner and easier thing for my department when we're talking to these people about the projects that, both commercial and residential.
And so basically, on that second page, the twenty-three wide easement was passing the primary thing that was, you know, the change.
That's one of the things, AC, the one main thing that I feel like beside the road construction specifications is the cul-de-sac, you know, the circumference of the cul-de-sac from outside to outside so that you can get your equipment around there and make sure that that fits our fire code. I think, Stuart, do you remember some of the other things that we dealt with on the fire code and the road construction?
Mainly the compaction besides the cul-de-sac, making sure that's the same because we have a lot of inconsistencies coming in besides the cul-de-sac, turnarounds.
But this something that Stuart and Chad and I work.
It's basically just a cleanup to make sure everything's matching with the code.
Okay. I vote yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Gayle?
Yes.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Next item on the agenda is under new business, number two, consideration for employee benefit for air med care coverage. We were approached a while back in Danielle's office and my office, and then I kind of sent him on to Tom's office to discuss this with him later, but I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
You're fine.
I'll make a motion to adopt that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was moving on. All right, thank you. Have a motion to adopt.
Second.
And a second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, number two, consideration for employee benefit for air med care coverage. I'm always looking for incentives to, one, to keep our employees and, two, to draw new employees that are interested in working for the city. I think we've got a great place to work, but this seemed like a good idea to me to possibly put this under the city's purging as far as making these payments. So I'll let Tom explain a little bit, but this is the air med care that you may already be familiar with, where you pay a yearly amount and you're guaranteed an air flight to a hospital, I suppose, wherever that may be. I know we've had two employees here that have experienced that, the chief and Tom himself can testify to the expense of that. I'm not gonna try to sell you the plan, but I would like to settle the council on the idea of the city taking this in as a package deal for the employees. So, Tom, you wanna talk about the costs a little bit?
We'll talk about the cost.
Oh, I'm sorry, and the gentleman's here, I'm sorry. There you are.
One of the things I wanted to point out is when it was initially brought to our attention, they were offering it as a payroll deduction so that they wanted to do multiple years, they're, you know, five-year plan, they could do it and we would withhold it a little bit at a time out of twenty-four, twenty-six pay checks a year. And that would make the cost a little bit less significant for the employee over time. Normally, when you do that, the receivables held by the vendor, it's not held by the city. In this case, they were asking the city to pay upfront and then deduct and pay the city back. That's not legal because that would be advancing money as a loan, is the way that the law looks at it. So when I approached him back on the results of that consultation through the lead audit and asked if any other cities were doing that, I was given the response that there is another type of a program that the city's been up for and it has to be more with the position, not the person. And I'll let you take it over from there.
Thank you.
May I interrupt? This gentleman I've known for a while, he actually came to our business and our business did sign up with him because it is a great program.
Oh, yeah.
And my love of Hall got lifelighted and it cost her, and it was in Connecticut.
Twenty years ago.
Twenty years ago, and yeah, it was horrific. So it really is a great program, I'm just saying.
Good evening. I'm Dan Mello, I'm with Air Med Care Network, you know locally as Air Evac. And what Mr. Marsh was referring to was our employer pay programs for membership. One being was called the employer full pay where you can basically purchase the membership in the name of your employee. I'm sorry, is everybody familiar with that membership? No. If you are an Air Evac member and you get flown to the hospital by any of our aircraft, you don't pay a bill for that flight. We are in thirty-eight states, three hundred and twenty locations across the country. Air Med Care Network has four providers, Air Evac that you know here, Medtrans, Guardian, and Reach. Some of those are fixed wing, like in Alaska, most of our air there is fixed wing and or it's either fixed wing or helicopter. And your membership is good across all of our network. And that's really what our membership is. Our membership with a business plan is sixty-five dollars per person per year. That membership doesn't just cover the employee, but it covers everyone that lives in the house, including college students who are undergrads. They are enrolled, though they live somewhere else on campus in another state maybe. Their membership, the members' membership covers that student as well. And back to the membership plan, we have employer full pay where you can just purchase membership in the name of the employee longer than they say or go. And then the most popular option for a business is the census plan. So if you had fifty employees, you would buy fifty plans. And while someone is employed by the city, they're covered by that membership. Upon termination or separation from employment, they would leave that behind and they'd stay with the city. And the next person that hired in would get that membership. It's a great way to retain employees and as Thomas said, it's a great way to attract employees. You know, just, you know, you can advertise that in the benefits package. Does anybody have any questions?
Would it be based on a calendar year or is it going from now?
It would be a date, enrollment date to enrollment date. So if you enrolled tomorrow, you know, your renew day would be an annual basis, you know, number fifteen. With a employer full pay, you have the option of purchasing multiple years of coverage. With the census plan, you can only do one year at a time. And at renewal, you would send a new spreadsheet of who's employed by the city and that would be updated by Air Evac.
Tom, are, is it, I just like, when I'm looking at it, it's about sixty-five dollars per employee? And so how much would it impact the city?
Close to five thousand dollars if you're looking at full-time. That's the question. Would the, this benefit can be extended to any part-time employees and when how part-time don't have any benefits? But that would be a question for the jar. So how long do you do that?
We have got like sixty-two full-time employees.
Something like that, yeah.
So you're talking four thousand dollars.
Yeah, less than five thousand.
And that's the employee and their family.
Everybody that lives at that house.
I mean, I think you would obviously do the, whatever you call that.
The census?
Yeah.
Position.
Right. How many part-time employees do we have?
They're all, let's see, they've got three.
Three.
Yes, three.
Well, the, are, is there?
Depends on whether you say they're part-time or.
They usually are, but they're part-time. Well, they're both, but.
Now, there's only two volunteers, rest of them are part-time.
So there's twenty-something part-time there.
Thirty-something on the front.
If you add it all of them up, you're right at about a hundred. So you're sixty-five.
But they don't get any other benefits.
They're not getting any of them. Health insurance, dental vision, life.
Are there, that's a question. Are there options, exclusions to where a fireman that was out in the act of fighting a fire that had to be metfliated or in combat was in duty, would there be any exclusions for the?
No. No, our main goal is that the person with the membership, if they're flown by us, they don't have a bill for that flight. There are other air transport companies in this area. Our membership doesn't cover them, their membership doesn't cover ours, but we have the most aircraft in this area than any of the others. Just in the state of Arkansas, we have to, they're, trade bills fifty thousand dollars a flight in Little Rock.
Fifty-seven. Our dollars were sixty-five thousand from here to Little Rock.
Daniel takes a question. So if a firefighter falls off a roof, fires on, falls on a stirrup, both have to be air evac.
Both are covered if they're under.
Both are big government.
Yeah, if they're flown by air evac.
So where are all these air flights and that if something happened that they would be right there on scene?
So we have, we have aircraft behind Baptist. We have an aircraft in Paris. Those are the two closest ones. We have DeQueen, Springdale, Harrison, Mountain Home, Jonesboro, that's a little bit far for this area. Another one right on the border, I think I'm missing one, but that's just Arkansas. We have Oklahoma as well. In Oklahoma, how does even wire helicopters in Arkansas?
Does it cover you in other states?
Yes, covers you across our entire network, all thirty-eight states. There are some states we do not have coverage in. There, Washington, the upper eastern of the United States.
Well, I guess, does it, say, I'd like to see that, you know, we cover, you know, for full-time and part-time employees.
As a volunteer firefighter myself, you know, special spot in my heart for fire department. I like that idea.
Well, the cost, what did you say, Tom, sixty-five hundred, including?
With all.
With all my employees. Mind you, hate to say they're off the bucket. To make sure that our employees are covered. And again, incentive. Any other questions for Mr. Mello? Do we need a resolution? Push the resolution to the budget? I think it's just information tonight and then when we do budget, the gentleman will have the opportunity to.
What that is?
The lesson, go ahead.
I'm just looking for a clean start.
Like coverage effective January first?
Yeah.
Has that a benefit to employees?
We could go fiscal year, fiscal year.
Reserve officers would cover that.
Reserve?
Reserve officers.
You're asking if they would be covered?
Well, whether they're covered or not is up to them.
Right, yeah. Do they include, the council consider including?
Chief, they.
Reserve officers.
They reimburse, they true volunteers.
If they're true volunteers, we don't pay them, so they're not really employees.
So if a firefighter falls off the roof on a stirrup and falls onto me, where I would fly a firefighter, then I wouldn't be covered.
Unless you bought your own plane.
Unless I bought my own plane. And same with, a reserve officer would not be covered unless he bought his own plane. But that really only affects me and AC. We're the only volunteer. And who does that affect your department?
I don't want to say their names because they're.
You don't have to say their names, but two people, one person. How many are you at?
Three.
Three.
Chief, you got something?
We have an odd duty accident, I think it's gonna be covered by the city no matter what, whether it's volunteer or not, because they're in service to the city when they're at fire. So the city's probably gonna be paying for that trip to Little Rock because if it's a trauma, they're getting air back, whether it's Mercy Air Back, no matter what, Panthers aren't gonna pay, they're not gonna take them to U A and S.
Partman's company.
Yeah, we should.
Go ahead and show them something.
So that would probably cover that. The only thing for this is gonna help is if we're in an accident outside of work and it's a fifty-fifty which they'll probably give. If it's a trauma, they're going to Little Rock and they're gonna be flying there and building, they'll assume that Panthers are very often have.
Sorry, so it doesn't cover elected officials either?
I don't think so. We're not, well, I don't think.
It's not up to him.
We're not always.
Whoever the city decides, and I mean, you can figure that out in budget study.
Yeah, we can figure that out in budget.
Who just needs to say?
I just say, and what we need to probably look at is a clean date, fiscal year, fiscal course.
So we try.
Daniel wants to open enrollment.
I haven't been given dates yet.
It's, but it's December.
It should be, it should be the first two weeks of December, but it normally is. And she's supposed to live until tomorrow.
Yes.
January one, we just don't know how many people we have.
Correct. Would that work for you?
During budget, I'm gonna grab.
I'll just add the line and all the people that you're gonna put in and multiply it by sixty-five. That's how the department will be hit for it and then they get one check and we give them a list of the people.
You're calling the budget crosser or nothing?
You are, you are. It's our budget.
Now, it's gotta be names, right?
Yeah, so with the census, that's the easiest to do because I would give you a spreadsheet and either Thomas or Danielle would just list all the employees on this spreadsheet with name, birthday, and address. And if you don't need to list household members in this, in this one, just list them on that spreadsheet and send it back to me.
My question, would they be covered if they left employment, but they're still covered that year?
No, as soon as they leave.
As soon as they leave it terminated.
Goes to the new person that.
And the new person, would you have to have their number, would they automatically be covered?
So whoever's in charge, who would be in charge of this, you know, if you have an employee leave, you could just call one eight hundred, Air Evac.
So HR would maybe keep that.
Yes, yes.
I mean, I think for a lot of companies, one thing to consider in all this is, you know, you're trying to incentivize people to be employees and to retain employment in all those companies. You know, most companies aren't gonna offer benefits to volunteer, part-time, whatever, you know. We do what we want, I guess, but you're trying to sort of incentivize people to be full-time employees here, you know, if you want the benefits to work to get the job, you know.
Also trying to incentivize people to be a reserve officer and help out. You're also trying to incentivize people to be a volunteer. You're also trying to incentivize people to be a volunteer firefighter or a, thanks for calling.
Well, but those are the things that like Sturt's saying, those are gonna be covered under, if you get hurt on a fire, you're gonna be, the city's gonna cover that. Right.
It's still, they're saying, saying it's incentive, you know, just like Sandy, you know, uh, chief doesn't say, you know, for, it's just a, another incentive to help recruit reserve officers and, you know, uh.
Well, it's not an incentive that we're already covering.
There's no incentive for reserve officers, they don't get paid, they're volunteers. I do look at what we're hearing. Is it something that?
And per government either way, you don't stay on fire and there's no incentive to that person, because it can be covered either way.
It does just cover you while you're working. Covers you while you're on vacation or home.
Your home.
It's covered, you know, everybody in that household. It's a good incentive.
I mean, we're talking sixty-five bucks, I mean, I just do that?
And you never know when an accident's gonna happen. We put a woman on the helicopter side of the road. Uh, she missed the step, got out of her truck and broke her fall of her face. And so she, she took her ride to, say, at two A M.
You, can I ask one more? Yes, sir. You talked about replacing employees, what if we just grow by employee? So can we add someone mid-year or you lock into that number once?
You can't add. So if you don't, if you don't, uh, you know, send sixty-five dollars every time you add a person, when it comes time to renewal, your renew price would be growth plus fifty. So if you grew by ten people, so that would be six hundred and fifty dollars plus three point five. Um, because, you know, I guess they're assuming that you added employees somewhere during the year and they were covered by your membership, by your city membership. But, you know, you hadn't paid for that membership. So at renewal, it's growth plus fifty. Is that even close to anything on charging?
Always, always growth plus fifty is all.
Oh, yeah, on, on renewal. But what, what I have done, like, for example, um, Boom Bowl, when they signed up, they purchased extra spots on their census because they had planned on expansion.
We should budget, any open budget, any budget, open positions, we find that membership for that.
Yeah. And they just listed it on the spreadsheet as to be announced.
Mr. Newton?
Yes, sir. Can you tell me how many other cities around here are actually doing that, I mean, involved in that?
Um, so Boom Bowl, Hackett, uh, La Vaca's working on it, uh, this tonight. I'm pretty new to this position as salesman, uh, so I'm still getting around to all the cities.
That's fine, I'm just.
Yeah, Paris.
That was the chief, was right, everybody's talking, you know, if you're, uh, you know, Rod, AC rep, they'll know, you know, which they would. If you had that incentive, somebody wanted to come on the fire department, but you had that incentive, not only are you covering this, guess what, you come here and you do this, not only you cover it, we're covering everybody you have. You know, it's recruiting tool.
Yes, absolutely.
Besides being a good deal, because, uh, I had a family member that got sent to Springdale, no Springfield, had to go to Springfield, he said a hundred percent is two thousand dollars. They filed bankruptcy, couldn't pay it, that's another rate they made. Business, they couldn't pay it, uh, I got it, there's a bunch of people in here, got it?
Yes.
You got it, hey?
So, uh, if we're talking fifty or a hundred people, I kind of get it, but we're talking about two people and we're talking about two people. You know, these people work for my city and, uh, I get that they're covered if they're under a fire or anything, but I would love for my two councilmen to be covered at their home or at the business. And my reserve, uh, police officer, I'm, I would like you guys to put that in the budget, we're talking five people.
What about your other councilman? Hey, you want to know about him? Let's do, let's do a couple more of them with this gentleman. I'm sorry, why?
That's what happens in a no show, you gotta get you here tonight and get it.
One more, uh, you know, the chief got three reserves, I don't know what the two in the fire department, I couldn't see that, I guess you got two reserves or whatever. Couldn't see them not pay them sometimes, you know, like, for being that call and, you know, on calls, like, pay them twenty-five dollars a month to cover that or whatever. And then, you know, that, you know, see if there's something like that that would get those, you know, you're just talking a small number to get them, like, a paycheck or something.
No, we're, not a bad idea, but we're getting into budgetary things. Uh, we need to let this gentleman.
We just wanted to.
Did you say Mayor Rogers is doing Paris?
Yeah, Paris.
We're all in, I like you.
Yeah, Paris, Larsen, Larsen, they have a plan. Paris is fantastic, the whole city, the, the school, the Paris school system, and the school pays for, for all the teachers, it's in the payroll deduction.
Is that a good?
I think we're all in agreement to figure that out.
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure the numbers out, but I think we're all in.
You have to see, does it, you have kids, they're not gonna take care of it for us, and then they're gonna apply anything serious circumstantial.
And, and a fifty, sixty, sixty-five thousand dollars trip, that's.
I guess there's no guarantee that your company's gonna be, it's called.
That, that's the thing, there's, there's no way we can guarantee, we give you stickers and keychains and, and, uh, you know, we, we put it on your forehead if you wanted us to, um.
Who makes that call, the police, the paramedics, I mean, who makes the call?
It's, it's the paramedic, um, the, between the paramedic and dispatch, so.
And I think now that you're, I mean, I'm just going out on, like, we, we, we join, I don't know that we're renewed now, but we should be, but we did it a few years ago. We got a car and an I D car to carry, like you said, the stickers on your car. You can't assume that those folks that are taking care of you are gonna, are gonna make that call to who you remember those. But like you said, there's no guarantee.
There's no guarantee, but at least five hundred.
Yeah, better than not.
What are the other options here, Mercy?
Mercy, Pafford, I don't know if Pafford has a helicopter or just fixed wing, but I have a Mercy helicopter. And, uh, like in Russellville, they have survival flight, they have helicopters.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you very much, thank you, thank you, counsel. Uh, number two, number three, I'm sorry, I'm new business is parks. Let me, as Mr. Goldstein comes up, if you would, let me, uh, do something I meant to do at the beginning of the meeting. You don't maybe want to do, but I'm gonna jump ahead. Uh, tonight, we have in our midst, uh, with the weird face on, what looks on his face right now, Casey Craig, uh, we recently, uh, moved up into the Parks Department director position. And I would like to get the council's approval on that tonight, we don't always do that, kind of slips through the, the, uh.
Mayor, you're stealing my thunder.
Yes, I am. Uh, so if you want to address the council on that, Mr. Goldstein, please do, I think now appropriate time.
This is the mayor of city council, Mr. Henry, sir. Uh, just to let you know, the Parks Commission is renewed, Brandon Tate and Kay Edley, uh, Parks Commission for additional three years. And just wanted to thank everybody, we have a new Parks Director, Mr. Casey Craig, uh, I believe he's been a very asset to the Parks Department and the Parks Commission.
I think that's. First thing, cell number is. So we need to vote to approve the commissioner?
Yes.
Or no?
Yes, yes.
You need confirmation, it's your commission, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
And motion second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Good day.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Goldstein. Uh, number four is finance, fixed assets scheduled, deletions approval.
On the legislative audit this year, we're gonna do a cleanup, we, we have, um, formulated our fixed asset schedule by departments. And that would be one of the major things that we had to address when the site started and the audit started going. As such, now there are several items that are on our fixed assets list that are needing to be deleted because the asset is no longer in our possession. These date back to two thousand and five and one is two thousand and nine. You should have a schedule, uh, delete in your packet and, uh, where deletes is by them, where it says not cited, those are, we validated those to be assets that need to be removed from our fixed asset schedule, they already been removed technically, because I had to remove them for the presentation purposes for the audit. Uh, we just need your, uh, review and approval that these are, uh, to be removed from our directors. As a.
But the ones that don't seem outside of, are still here.
Yes, those are not the ones we're asking about, we're asking about items number three, four, five, six, seven, twelve, eighteen, and nineteen.
Where are these things?
I mean, where are all of them?
Did they get auctioned?
I don't, they're two thousand and five, I don't know where they are.
So like a gigantic, expensive lawnmower and a wizard ride, rider, where are those things?
I think they've been auctioned, I don't know what's on this.
Yeah, if we match with the auction list, I'm seeing.
I mean, I, I just wonder if we're gonna prove something that somebody's house.
We wouldn't know, and I'm not gonna spend the energy to go and find them.
If you need me to go back there and look right now?
That's, no, 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 I don't need you.
This is a, this is basically for the, the satisfying.
Sturt, where's that thermal imager that's?
That was Scott, that's what he got, and we, our first guy here, we went out and stopped for, he wasn't breaking. Wanted everything right or not.
Where is it at?
It's always a crack, so.
Isn't he having a lot?
It don't work, it's working, I got right there season, but it don't work.
He's got a deer blood.
One of the things the auditors did is they went to these departments and they specifically interviewed all of these items.
Okay, so this Dixie Chopper is worth ten thousand dollars, it was auctioned off or something.
Some of these things get traded in, I mean, I can't testify to this one in particular, but sometimes when the, one of these department heads buy a new, I'm assuming, I know Chad's not here. Jeff would know, but some, sometimes they trade up in on a new one. Sir, Greg, you all?
I, I bought a used one before from Street.
Okay, and they go from department?
I bought it from them.
Okay.
Used until they just quit. Rod, you know, I get accused of hoarding and stuff and then you guys, how ladies over there, get rid of all the stuff that's junk? You know, I actually got rid of that one, I said.
I'm sorry, boys.
They call me a hoarder over there, and so I'm not getting rid of anything that he has or works. I come back, all my boxes are gone on here.
I make a motion to approve this list of deletions.
Second.
And a motion is second.
Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Thank you. Number five is finance, budget and cost of living adjustments for twenty twenty-three.
Reason that we need this determined tonight is because of budgets. And Arkansas being held up as an exalted disqualification. Right. So the federal award was eight point seven percent. I have listed the, in the first column there, the amount of budget salaries. And then for the federal award, what that would do for each department and the total, so on a three point three million dollar budget, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars is what the impact would be.
Got a lot of some debit.
It's real money, yes. What I also did, because you have a, an option to not necessarily award the full amount, I provided the seven percent, six percent, five, four, three, and two. So that you can see the impact as it was one percent of the point after the eight point seven, so. Uh, five percent would be at one hundred and sixty thousand, three percent is just under a hundred thousand, and a two percent is sixty-four thousand to the city, as far as cost of living is concerned. So I didn't know where, what your position.
Is that based on C P I, did you say?
Now, that's the federal award for cost of living. That's what social period is given, based on the inflation.
Biggest raise ever.
That's right, based on rate of inflation.
I think we spent, I believe we spent some of this time on the sixty-five dollar question. Back to Mr. Smith, order, sixty-five bucks, already had a discussion, give it to everybody, and now we're sitting there looking at real money.
Thank you, Rod.
Two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars is a lot of money.
And that's basically an estimate, pretty good, yes, based on the amount of budget, but, yeah, after there are some positions that are not filled, but that's factored in. So that's your ballpark.
I was worried about a nine thousand dollar Dixie Chopper.
So I don't know where you are with what you're thinking with this.
I think for the, keep up with inflation, you know, I think that's, that's what we need to do.
C P I is seven point seven, I think, if I'm reading that correctly.
That is for, uh, I think, have it year over year?
Yeah. Twelve month, uh, oh, no, all items, twelve months, seven point seven, all items, less split energy, six point three, uh, blah, 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 blah. So that was three month, twelve. I guess I forgot to say.
The federal awarded COLA, which is what the ordinance talks about in the resolution, is eight point seven percent.
So my two senses, you always know, you're probably tired of hearing, is I call that, uh, and it doesn't seem to be melt money anymore, it seems to be a lot more than that, when it's eight point seven percent, but truly, it is, it is melt money, it is, it is the cost of living. And, and I'm not saying you're not already thinking about it, please consider that this is your most precious commodity, if you will, that is your employees, the city. We need to keep up, as, as Mr. Brown said, with inflation and keep them, their head above water as much as we possibly can. And I appreciate the conversation earlier about the incentive on the, on the air back issue too, and I'm certainly, and I don't think we're asking for a vote tonight necessarily, and it was something that gives them, Tom. I think he is, I mean, he's always been planning the budget. I was trying to be nice. He isn't, he isn't eating something so he can work with the, back to the departments. Well, I think that we've been fortunate that, uh, inflation has been low, uh, all these years, you know, and knew that, oh, there's gonna be a time coming. And, uh, I, I certainly, uh, approve, and you go follow the line at eight point seven.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Somebody get her above water.
Yeah. I think you base your budget on those numbers, man, if the budget don't balance out, we run across that bridge and get there.
I agree, I think we base the budget on those numbers, if we're controlled, we gotta go back and take them up.
All of them in the eight point seven?
I, I think, I think we should base our budget on that. You're, you may quickly come back and say, we're in trouble.
Some departments might be more than others, but you can, you can't, the way it works is it's across the board, so.
And that may help us out on some of the questions that we have, because we do know that we are under funding employees in comparison now to what other places are having to do. So that might help that conversation.
So do we need to bring a resolution back, sorry?
Everybody.
At the December meeting for the men max salary matrix, or do you wanna wait until after the budget's adopted?
Probably after the budget's adopted.
Wait, y'all never would agree my, uh, automatically adjust the COLA schedule every year?
I like.
So the schedule changes, not that the charter changes, but, I mean, I think you gotta plug that percentage now into that matrix and move the matrix so we can see what it is.
I think you do.
Just, if we end up, the budget would take eight point seven, like we've asked you to go ahead and figure it on, and it would just be plugged in.
But you have to adjust your matrix as well.
Cause the men max.
Yeah, we just got all the men maxes.
My budget, what all max would do that?
It works well, what we did works well, so it doesn't need to change, I think.
It'll, my budget, when you see it, will recalculate the Max. Because some people are already at it. So if you move the 8.7, that Max moves, they'll get the 8.7.
Which is, you know, that conversation's come up about COLA before over the years, over the 20 years I've been on. And sometimes COLA would be 1.24 and everybody wants 3%. COLA's 1.24.
Just down if you're able to do it after all.
And I think, like I said, we just need to put it in there and see how to fix the budget when we tally everything else.
So is that a motion?
I'm gonna show motion. About that, do the budgetary process.
Second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Thank you. And our employees, thank you. Number six under new business is city attorney ordinance authorizing statutory retirement benefits with Michael Hamby. Want to see passenger? Do you do this yourself?
opposed.
I was gonna ask, Daniel was gonna say, well, you said we could go off the first reading.
Oh, he's gonna go off the second.
I would ask for a version of that.
So it's him not to go against his own.
I make a motion to put it on the first reading.
Motion second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
unanimous, always. I told you, Rita, you're here.
I told you, Rita.
Okay, so ordinance authorizing hanging up old retirement finishes. I probably may be declaring emergency for the first. We're not in the emergency though.
I appreciate you guys. We don't need to pass it. I'm gonna move back first, man.
Well, even if you don't give it, we can.
I made a motion to be waived, say in the third reading.
Second. Motion second. Even without your emergency, it's done by the time he writes the check.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Yes.
Make a motion to be adopted.
Second.
Motion second to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Yes.
There's no need for emergency call. We've got 30 days. I appreciate you guys.
You probably should be back. So on that note, I'm gonna make it to do tonight. I'm gonna make it to do next month, so you have to be back.
I was gonna give a speech tonight, but I was trying to get your folks to.
If you do not, we'll, no.
I'll have to be a little, I have to be a little, I'm at 9:00 anyway, so.
Go on, we're supposed to do this one.
We'll move along. So, alright, we'll save the tears for next month. Uh, that is everything on the evening. Department reports and questions from council. They have, uh, here for department heads here, please.
Oh, on your tablets are pictures from Kenny Sunday of the sidewalk improvements at the club. It's in the black color that's on there.
Questions or anything from department heads from council? If not, council forum? If not, I got a mayor forum. Very short. I just want to get you up to date on the, we signed the contracts, kept assigned contracts for the Tenspur sidewalk project this last week, which is huge. Kudos to Ms. Danielle Smith for getting 35 or 37, I think it's 32, 37 is what it was. Yeah, the ball, please.
Sunny Bell assisted.
Sunny Bell assisted. I work with all the crazy buyers come every single day while we don't have them, so that's a big deal. It's a big, big deal. And you're gonna see construction on Highway Tenspur, the sidewalk. Explain that to me again. Casey was in there and he understood that better than I did because.
On or before the Monday after Thanksgiving.
So take your pick of that, but right around Thanksgiving.
Well, five is a Monday.
By the Monday after, you'll see construction. All of, all that equipment and material will be stationed just this side of, on the left side of Tenspur. The.
By the co-op.
By the co-op, just this side. It's Burg's property, so that's where it'll be coming in and out. We talked a little bit about this morning. Chief will probably have hands, hands full a little bit with construction. The property construction company has promised that they will do very, the least they damage, if you will, to businesses coming in and out of the driveways, even though they're gonna cross all of those businesses. They're going down Food Row. It'll begin out at the Golden Years home, coming back this way, all the way it's due to go to. It is gonna come all the way back to Dr. uh, uh, somebody up in.
Singer.
Singer's office, and then on the other side of the road, directly across the road, it used to be Bank Corp, all the way down to Waffle House. They may go, they may jump back and forth a little bit, he said, depending on weather and what they have and all that, so that's, that's a really big deal. That's phase one. And again, that's about three years in the coming and making. And then we've already been approved for phase two of that same project, probably phase two of that from RDOT, 820 grant. It's an interesting thing. Price went up a lot over the last three years, so our, our costs. Hundred and some thousand dollars more. That's a 600 and.
688.
688, $688,000 project, believe it or not. And then phase two's already been approved, and that was scheduled originally to go from Golden Years toward Walmart. We talked it over amongst ourselves, and it seemed that we'll give a bigger bang for the vote to come back this way. So phase two will begin at Dr. Singer's office approximately right there and come back to Bass Street. So we're gonna apply for phase three.
March.
In March for Casey. And Wapitini helped us with that grant for sure. Again, that's just a big deal for us. So I just want to let you know that's finally coming to fruition.
What is phase four?
Phase three would be, we don't know. We haven't, we haven't got that designed yet.
We'll pick it out of Walmart.
We wanted to be out, we'd probably go to Walmart instead of doing this. Yeah, we'd probably go to Walmart.
Mr. Crawford, they have a, is there time for it?
Not, uh.
120 days.
120 days.
120 days.
Depending on weather. Yeah, weather.
So about April. We're done.
Yep. I did ask if I could be told every day where I could put my name, and they said I couldn't. So that was, that was pretty clear. They do go. So that's a, that's a really big deal to get some of those folks off the, off of the shoulders. Traffic signals, the one out on Highway 71, and you've seen that's been staged out there for a long time. I'm talking about on Tenspur 71. They've got poles laying there for months and months and months. They have begun some of the digging, and I think they're placing cable underneath now or getting ready to, if they haven't already. That light was supposed to be, was actually scheduled to be on in October.
Late summer.
Late summer, sorry, even back. And then they've given us a couple of other days. So right now, we don't know. We're just working on it, hopefully soon. And that's the traffic signal on Tenspur 71. It'll be going on, you guys going on a couple of years ago. And the traffic signal at the caboose, as you know, has been quite a thing on Facebook and all that, in social media. That was damaged during the overlay. We were so grateful to get early, we damaged the other construction company. Doesn't matter. They damaged that, that loop in that light. And so we had to turn it off, or it turned itself off, basically. Then chief and I got together, talked about it, didn't want to, just trying to figure out what to do. RDOT, this is us and RDOT talking, and as of, right now, as you can see, we've bagged those lights. To me, it seems like it's working okay, but the light is going to be, the looping is going to be repaired. I asked RDOT before. Forsgren left and did a final on the overlay, which they're done, but they're gonna come back and tidy up on the shoulders a little bit. Forsgren is gonna go ahead and pay. We can either let it go and decide later amongst ourselves, because that's gonna be a city street, as you know. It kinda already is, kinda. I told, I told Chad Adams, or asked Chad Adams to have Forsgren go ahead and replace that looping while it's on then. It's probably only gonna be a couple thousand dollars, but I thought, why should we pay for it if they tore it up? Then we have the option of turning it back on or taking the light out. The pole and everything, it's gonna, it's ours. So I'll come back to you, council, for sure, to find out what your thoughts are on that. And we kinda did a poll unofficially on, on Facebook or social media, and it went both ways, back and forth. I think the biggest concern is people coming off of, um, or, thank you, turning, turning left. If you're in a car, you cannot see that over that railing. I'm not in a car very often, but then it occurred to me that that was an issue at all, because I'm in a truck 99% of the time, so I went to the city car, parked there, and sure enough, you cannot see. So it's, it's dangerous in that sense. It does help with flow through town, so that's a good thing, but right now, if they told me next week they're gonna fix it, probably, we will turn it back on and then, and then see what happens. We can always decide later if we want to. The thought process, one of the thought processes was that if we remove it, there's another great place, in my opinion, very much needed for a stoplight. Traffic signal is out at Westwood Drive. So we're gonna look at that too, and we can look at that harder and more seriously, because that will be our street, and we can do with it what we want. But I think that's a, I think that's a good spot for the consideration of stop sign or traffic signal. Those are the updates on the, on the traffic signals in town. But if anybody asks, we'll be, gonna be prepared ASAP and we'll turn it back on. You would think. That's all I have. Council? Charlie, can you go over the dates that, that were set for the budget sessions, spending sessions?
Spending sessions?
For council? We don't have one yet, but if you want to go ahead.
Yeah, we never.
We've only got commissions.
I thought one was coming out, I feel like.
Two commission years.
Commission.
On this week Wednesday, water sewer at 3:00, and the other one is parks commission Thursday at 4:00. But those are the commissions.
So should we go ahead and start?
I was gonna mention that, if you wanted to set some.
Never hurts.
That should never hurt with that going. But now the planning, parks, water sewer after this week, they, their commissions will have reviewed theirs, so water sewers four budgets.
I'd say the week after Thanksgiving would be a good opportunity, wouldn't it?
I'm, I'm aiming for, never.
Because the week of Thanksgiving never seems fair. Works for the scalpel.
Animal control, water sewer, parks, and planning are all ready. Parks is four budgets as well as water sewers four.
We could do that the weekend of Thanksgiving.
That's a lot to tackle on one. Lawrence, you're giving us then Monday night at 4:00.
It's on a Monday night, yeah. Do you want, um, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday that week? Which one's better?
Which means you'll have to approve your budget that day.
That would be good.
And then they, I could review it after.
When are they doing that? When do you do in your water?
Spending session is Wednesday, and we'll have a reading the following Monday, didn't it?
Two Mondays from the end.
28.
Two.
28. You'll meet the 28th.
Yeah.
Monday afternoon, too.
I said we scheduled one to the 30th, you know, I think.
It's a Wednesday night, is that okay? Okay.
Well, that's Wednesday night, is that correct?
Yeah, they're not good from Daniel, Wednesday night.
Last thing, Tim, we probably call him James for basketball, I think, starting. I don't know if you guys, do you do junior high or not? Sir, chief, do you know if Councilman Zerry does junior high ball, basketball, do you know?
Don't know. I think retired to do that.
I don't think he does.
Oh, you're about to call him. I'm sorry. I thought you were about to call officially.
No, 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 no. He hasn't told me. So what do we, what do we do Thursday and then see? Are you available Thursday? Instead of Wednesday?
Thursday, December 1st.
Try that on the first.
Do y'all like it Friday 5:00 or 6:00?
6:00.
6:00.
If you have an issue, taco soup was typically provided by Tammy, so Casey? No.
I'll make seven. I'll make it.
Danielle, we'll step up to the plate.
Yeah, I'll make it.
What's your, pardon me, I'm gonna do planning, parks, animal control, water sewer by themselves, that's four budgets.
What do you think, Tom?
It's up to, it's up to you. We'll be ready. I'll be ready with any of the ones.
Water sewer, these.
We should have do water street.
Street is, the ones that are gonna be probably a little bit later is police, fire, street, general.
I would suggest you cover what you feel like you covered, maybe.
Well, it's, I don't have budgets, that's the problem.
Does the water sewer and planning?
Water sewer and planning. That, that would work.
On the first, you said.
Parks and animal control could be another one, because that's multiple budgets on parks and animal control for that. Street is because we have a new director, and he's not even here to deal with the older of them. So that's, I gotta get to them first, and then fire's still coming in, and I have police, but I'm not ready to, I have to formulate it first. There's, it's pretty detailed.
So really, just whatever you can get to that, I guess.
Yeah, we can knock out half of them in those two meetings, haven't we?
Okay, we'll do it at 6:00 PM on December the 1st.
And that's gonna be water sewer and planning.
Guess you can make your next meeting at that meeting.
Yeah. Okay, sounds good. Jeff Turner is our new street director. He has been to work a little bit, and now he's had, got a call, yesterday I got a call, he texted me on the weekend, and he was calling from the city for Monday and Tuesday. He had to go down there for a procedure, which I knew about. I just didn't know exactly when it was gonna happen, and neither did he. They, they called him and said, we need you here Monday. So he's, he'll be back to work Wednesday.
He'll be all right.
We hope. Yeah. It's a, it's an own point of detail. Yeah, he'll be, he'll be fine. And he's already been over to work and kinda got himself involved with the street department a few days, but unfortunately, this came that quick, but good for him, but he'll be back Wednesday. And I would like to say officially too, before we adjourn on record, that I very much appreciate the confidence of the citizens of voting me back into office. And I promise to work hard, I promise you that I will work hard with the council. I know Mr. Brown's been reelected, and we're all gonna work well together and get things accomplished for this great city, so thank you for trusting me with four more years. Roger is here too. Roger Rainwater's here. Roger will be joining us. Mr. Councilman, Rob, elect Rainwater will be joining us in January, so welcome, sir.
I love that Charlotte got 100% of the votes. Thank you. Thank you for the grant.
Oh, and by the way, yeah, our cigar trader has been reelected 100% of the votes. The people with no comments, just good for you. That's awesome.
Keep that going.
Sorry. Yeah, he's not here. Mr.?
I have talked to you in great detail about what I'm up to speed, discussing next week. You know, everything that I have hanging out there, and he's really a good guy. He's been turning and here he is.
What happens with transfer records? Do you have to give them a?
Yeah, I want to give, well, I'm, I don't know if he wants 32 years.
He's not even that old, is he?
So is this the point where we set some filing systems and make a little office for the city attorney here?
Should I hear no?
Well, I mean, wouldn't it be a, Mr. Parker, whether or not you wanted to.
We'll visit with him about that. You know, we, we talked about that before, obviously, and yeah, we'll, we'll get with him and see what he thinks about that. I think it would be beneficial, as I, as I thought it would be, and Mike made an attempt, and it's just been hard. I keep petting you like, don't go.
We have an open office.
There you go. So I think it'd be, it's always beneficial to. The rankings within city hall to have that contact or that, that closeness or physical training to, to visit with him, whatever, whatever, whatever we can make happen, I think is a good idea.
I think he'll get on board whoever.
We can give him Daniels, she's got five offices. We did police, yeah. That makes sense a lot.
State police, just state get it or office, so we have.
Oh, okay. We'll visit, we'll visit with Mr. Parker. Any other thing, anything else from council or crowd? Thank you for coming tonight, be safe going home, I would entertain a motion to dismiss.
So is it?
Adjourn. Thank you.